Let's call the mayor and the board. Let me start with, call the board.
Mr. Muller is an absentee, Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Beazel?
Here.
Mr. Peterman is an absentee. And Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Okay, pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, and for the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Still out of breath. Entertaining motion for approval of the amendments in the last meeting.
I would like to make a motion for one amendment to those minutes. Under the Terry Rash Section Progress Preservation, we have the case that we presented but not our response.
Oh.
So, I mean, I think we had said, yes, a letter will go out, or something to that effect.
Excellent, good catch, Ken. Thanks for finding that.
Other than that, oh, can you do a move to approve as amended?
I'll second.
Any other discussion on that? Phil, help Luke, please.
Mr. Beazel, or, Mr. Bowman? Ms. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Beazel?
Hi.
Mr. Thompson?
Hi.
Awesome, thank you all, visitors to Communications. Chief, take it away, this is a great night, there's a lot of stuff going on, this is awesome.
This is absolutely a great night. Thank you Mayor Haas and members of the Board of Council, Mr. Dill and supporting staff. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and this is a wonderful night for the Fire Department. I get a time throughout the year to kind of post on the Fire Department and tonight, obviously, I get to do that again because we are the best Fire Department in the business. So, again, I appreciate everybody being here tonight. Got some promotions. I'm not sure if ever in the city's stature if they've ever done five badge fittings in one night from the Fire Department, but tonight we're going to do that and again, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that as the Fire Chief. We're going to start off, first of all, and I'm going to get Captain Ammon who's already here, that's just the way they are, he's just a step ahead of me. He's going to help me do some things with the proclamations, executive orders, I should say, that were read a couple of weeks ago and get everybody a copy of those along with their badges. So, I want to start off first with our promotions within the Fire Department, with the retirement of Captain Parker and Lieutenant Brandt. We obviously, we had an opportunity off of our list, the list was created back in March and we do that every two years and so we hope to use that list as we go through that two-year period and obviously this time we get a chance to use it three times. And so again, that's one of the nice things about those lists as well as the new hired list and that list is about 21, 22 months old. We do that every time we need to hire, it lasts for two years and so we're able to use that list with our two new firefighter paramedics. So, those kinds of testing processes that we do in the Fire Department have really come to fruition this time and have helped us out a great deal with these, again, promotions as well as new hires. So, the first one we'll start off with is our captain's promotion, so Ken, if you step forward. Captain Tammy Webster, I'll read a little bit about her. Captain Tammy Webster joined our department in October of 99 and she's been a lieutenant on shift three actually over Captain Parker for a while and she handled all of our grants. And I'm just going to, I'd like to go ahead and tell you about the last grant that we wrote, or she wrote, we wrote and kind of, she kind of orchestrated that grant, was for an AFG grant for new self-contained breathing apparatus that we've been hoping for for now about a two-year period. Two weeks ago, we were notified that we got that grant, $130,000 for a new self-contained breathing apparatus for our people.
Awesome.
So Tammy did a fabulous job with that grant and again, that's the kind of work that she does as well as our whole department that helped, that helped handle attendance to that to make that grant worthwhile and we really thank the FEMA and the assistance of firefighter people for that grant. So, we're real happy, but she's handled that process, she's going to now step up as a captain and take over EMS with Jeff's retirement, she's going to be our EMS coordinator and you know, right at 90% of our duties every day, our emergency medical services runs. You know, we obviously handle the fires and those types of emergencies, alarms as needed, as need be, but EMS is the number one response within any Fire Department across the United States. So Tammy's going to step in and take some big shoes here and help us do our EMS coordinator duties and I know she'll do a great job once she's done throughout the, throughout the number of years she's been with us. So, with that being said, if you would, that's her, I'd like to just go ahead and, we'll pin her badge, she'll be captain, she'll be on shift three and her badge number and helmet number will be 654. No problem. Congratulations.
Yay.
You get it okay? Great. Excellent, good, thanks, thank you, congratulations again. Thanks, Ken. Appreciate it. Okay, our next, our next promotion is Lieutenant Rick Darny. Rick, step forward. Rick joined our department also in October of 99 and has been the firefighter on shift one, firefighter paramedic on shift one, of course, all of our personnel are paramedics, but has handled a number of things turning out here, does a lot of physical fitness, our physical fitness room downstairs, taking care of that. It also watches over our CPAT, which is the Physical Agility Test for New Firefighters in Northern Kentucky to be able to do a career department. So he kind of monitors that, he's also a member of the Fire Commission, so we're real proud of that and he works in the Fire Commission area and keeping track of those regulations that we need to be concerned about as far as the Fire Department's concerned. So Rick's done a great job on shift one, he's actually going to move to shift three and handle inspections, which is the number one priority for our lieutenants, is to do all the inspections throughout the city and also he's going to take over the grant process. He's working under Tammy on that shift as lieutenant, so he's got a good person to kind of orchestrate into the grant process, we do a flag for every grant that we can, as you well know throughout the years we'll be talking about them and so Rick, I know you do a good job at that and we welcome you to the ranks of lieutenant. He will be number 654, badge and helmet number and so we'll pin his lieutenant badge.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate it.
I didn't really mention it, Rick, while you're up, I should have done this and I apologize, but you want to introduce your family while you're up and I'll have Tammy do the same kind of thing. Things I forget, I apologize.
My wife Teresa, 20-year anniversary tomorrow. That's a testament to her, not me. Her man, she's a freshman at NKU this year and Kayla, she's seventh grader at Quinn Hoffman and I've got one at Dance Place and I've got one at Camp Pendleton, so not everybody's here.
Okay, great, you're welcome again. Amy, I'm sorry, would you introduce Tim? I don't have a Tim.
Our youngest, Logan. Two other ones are shooting sports, my mom, Lane, who's also the Fire Department Secretary and Mr. Deacon Tony, my father Mike, and Mr. Monty.
All right, number three, Eric, come forward. Lieutenant Eric Shermanburg was actually the first firefighter paramedic that I hired when, after I became chief in 2004. And he's probably our, one of our funniest firefighters, always keeps us on our toes. But anyway, Eric joined us in September of '05, as a firefighter on shift one, again, under Captain Lump, he's done a number of duties, but taking care of our facilities, what I call facilities maintenance, kind of works with great mounts now, and our property manager, kind of looking at our facilities, making sure our supplies are up what we need as far as our everyday operations, so he kind of takes care of that. The other thing that he's been kind of doing the last couple of years and he's going to kind of fall into the main category of this, but he's been taking care of our fire prevention poster contest. We've had some, as you well know from our handouts that I give you, we've had some great poster contest winners within the city and all the schools from grades K through five and so Eric's kind of headed that up and done a good job with that and so I thank him for that. As a lieutenant, again, he'll be doing a lot of inspections, that's his number one priority, but also he's going to take over our whole fire prevention operation, fire prevention, be our fire prevention officer, so October, he's gearing up for that, we're purchasing some things that we need to utilize and give out to the, to the all ages that we deal with with fire prevention and so Eric, I know you do a great job with that fire prevention as you have already with the poster contest and so we welcome you to the ranks of lieutenant. Eric will be the lieutenant, or actually is on today with Captain Ammon on shift two, he will be badge number 657 and helmet number and again, we'll pin that on at this point. Congratulations, thank you, Chief. Great, thank you, you're welcome. How about introducing your family?
My wife Sherri back there, she actually broke one door down for me, follows a firefighter like mine was to save the department, so I've been on a whole life, 20 years. My son Logan, he is a fourth grader at Woodville, this is my daughter Caitlin, she just transferred from Columbia and so she's 14 years old, which is all more, this is your highness.
Great, superb. And your dad was a fire chief in St. Bernard?
Yes, he was. So, comes from a firefighting family, so Eric, congratulations, thanks, everybody.
Those are our two new firefighter paramedics and again, I couldn't be more happy than to be able to welcome these two gentlemen to our ranks here at Fort Thomas. We'll start off first of all with Michael, or Mike, I mean, whoever works for Mike. Mike is, Mike Strady is a firefighter paramedic, joins us from the Florence Fire Department after spending nine years there. He actually started on August the 29th with our department, they go on two-week, a two-week period of working every day, eight hours a day and then trying to get acclimated to the Fire Department equipment and whatnot and then he'll go on shift, actually shift three with Captain Webster on September the 13th. So he's got another week this week to do his week, two weeks of acclimation and do the department equipment. So, Michael, again, from Florence with nine years of experience, we welcome you, they went through the testing process, did very well and again, that's why we have that list in place to be able to utilize it, so we don't have to continue to go out and test people. So, again, Michael, welcome. Michael will be badge number seven and helmet number 659 and so we'll pin your badge. Congratulations. Would you like to introduce your family who's here?
Sure, my wife Lisa, three kids, Grant, Lou, Benema, Patricia and her husband, Steve.
Welcome to the family here at Fort Thomas and we thank you for being here this evening. And certainly, last but not least, is Brandon from our, Brandon, if you'll come forward. Brandon is a firefighter being paramedic, went through our testing process as I mentioned, joins us from the Wilder Fire Department after spending seven years with the Wilder Fire Department, again, also started on August the 29th and he's in his two-week period and he'll actually go on shift one with Captain Lump, who's our photographer this evening, and on September the 14th, so he'll finish up this week and then over the weekend they get their break and then again, they'll start back on shift, or start actually on shift. So, Brandon, we welcome you from Wilder, Brandon will be badge number 10 and also helmet number 667. Introduce your family, Ken.
Yep, back in the room. Sorry, my wife Chrissy there and my five kids are here, Eric, Adam, yep, Damon and his mom and dad.
We welcome you very much to the beginning of the family here at Fort Thomas and thank you for being here this evening, so. Thanks, everybody, thanks to Mayor Haas, thanks to the Board Council, we appreciate it and, Mr. Dill, we appreciate the opportunity to get our numbers back up to compliment and so again, thank you for your time this evening, sir.
Excellent. Want to congratulate on the promotions and on the new folks in the department and I have to tell you, I was running up the steps, out of breath, feeling my chest, I figured, what better place to be in a new area, why if I was a paramedic, I figured I was safe. I figured I wouldn't have a problem at all. Seriously, congratulations, I think the city has some of the best public service in the country and there's no question that the citizens of this city really appreciate everything that the Fire Department does and also what the Police Department does and it's important, it's what, it's what makes us blessed to be in a city like Fort Thomas and we thank you for everything you've done and appreciate everyone being here tonight, we're going to get on with our meeting and you're welcome to stay for the meeting. Or you can all, you can walk out, whatever you're about to do, so, thank you all for being here. And I timed that perfectly, you did, you hit it on. 659, I'm looking at my clock, long during the year.
Andy, can you tell me a better good sign?
I felt terrible, I said, I said, Andy, I'm sorry, I'm the mayor of Fort Thomas, I got a meeting at Saturday. I said, but it's a short agenda, maybe I can get out of here. I said, where you can.
I should take his.
Yeah, yeah, right. It's, we're doing the Beyond the Stripes show at Hock House on Tuesday night, I didn't know that tonight was going to be happening until a couple of days ago. Anyways, would anybody else like to address council? No, 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 okay, good. All right, we'll move ahead, the folks of officers, take it away, Ron. That's you.
That's Ben. Actually, I just did in the memo, just a couple of things, the 2016 capital improvement program, I think I mentioned at the last meeting we were wrapping up our work, we are done. So the city crews are completed, we are waiting on Regler and I mentioned in here in the next couple of weeks, they actually have us scheduled for October 1st.
Excellent.
So they will be doing our street resurfacing on the 1st of October, it's probably about a week, week and a half process for them once they get in here. So that's, that's a pretty good timeframe though, we try not to get them into leaf season, so they're ahead of that, so that'll be good. The other part of that program is the pier wall sections that were part of the approval and recommendation from the Public Works Committee, we let that contract out with Smith Construction, we had a pre-construction meeting with them and they are going to start in mid-October on Waterworks Road, that will coincide with the closure for the bridge work that's being done by Department Transportation. They will close that portion where they are working, which is before you get to Main Avenue, they will be communicating their schedule to all those residents in Fort Thomas, so it's already not a through street, but additionally, it'll be closed at their point of construction. There's two sections of wall near there and they'll be doing both of them at the same time and that road will be closed in that construction area and they'll make accommodation just for, there's about a half dozen residents that are within that zone, so they'll make sure they have access at all times. Unfortunately, we don't stop with pier walls, we have, after the rains that we've experienced this year, two more slip areas on Tower Hill and if you recall, it was about a year ago, we did emergency repair on Tower Hill, we did a section down there that had failed, we have two more sections that are failing, one of them is significant, so we are working with dealing, or actually Terracan on that one, because they've done all the, all the work on Tower Hill previously to do design for a wall and then we'll have to bid that out and bring those to council.
None of the failures are occurring where it's already failed before, though?
No, no, all the pier projects in the past, this will be number seven, there's actually two sections, so it'll be section seven and section eight and one of them will connect piers, the first pier work was done in 1982 and it'll actually connect the 1980, one of the 1982 sections with a 2007 section, so that'll be continuous then through there. And then there's another isolated piece down further. And so, as much as we've done, I had them go back and do an overall scope of work, starting at Watch Point is the first one and you would think that we would have been almost done, but unfortunately, we're not. There's still a long length of Tower Hill that does not have piers and obviously, history's telling us that we won't appear in all of it, so it's something that will probably bring to the Public Works Committee just to look at maybe scheduling and or addressing those in advance over a period of time.
Only the areas that don't have houses, I mean, and like as you're going down on the right, I assume it's on the right side where it's?
It's all, the whole right side, basically from Watch Point down to the bottom till it flattens out, that whole section is prone to slippage.
Right.
One of the sections is measuring at about, they're going to do testing, one of them is about 28 feet and then it goes an additional 10 feet into the bedrock to seat those, so that's a pretty deep pier and the other one appears to be about 13 or 14 feet to bedrock.
How fast is that deteriorating, because I go down there multiple times a week and it seems like the last week it's probably increased by about a foot or so.
And we ran into a similar situation last year where we ended up having to do emergency because it slipped so fast. The upper one is moving and there's pavement failure and if you're driving it, you see it, I mean, with conditions like we've recently had, we can lose that portion of the road in a couple of weeks. So that's how important they become and how quickly they develop.
How quickly are these guys going to get back to you?
Well, we're going to put it out for bid, we're looking at, hopefully, well, we'll have bid numbers back before the October meeting of council. If something occurred before that, we may have to call a special meeting or have an emergency declared to accept bids, to have the work done. But the good news is, we do have a contractor, Smith, who is working in town and we're preparing the documents as quickly as we can with the idea that if they bid, they, they might save a mobilization if they were low bid, so we're still hopeful that.
Do we have an engineer estimate?
No, not yet.
We wouldn't even, probably not bother on something like this?
Well, we would.
You'd just go for bid?
I mean, we go for bids as quickly as we can in this situation, yes, but then we'll have an estimate as well, so.
But there's no chance of getting it back before the next meeting in September?
I don't think so.
Like, start working on it?
No.
Okay.
No, so we'll look at that at the October meeting.
But we could call a special meeting if the road starts slipping.
Correct.
Is there any option for council giving authority to me to authorize something up to a certain amount or something? If we get bids back, say, the end of September and the road stops slipping, that we can go ahead and do it without calling a special meeting?
I think you actually have to approve a bid to a company for an amount.
Okay.
Do you know, I think it has to be somewhat specific.
Okay.
As opposed to just saying carte blanche.
I think, I think.
All right, that's fine.
I think last.
That's what I'd ask.
Last year, we actually did, under emergency order, authorize a bid for a low bidder with the, with the marriage consent and then reported it to council. We don't intend to do that, but if we did have a situation where the road was compromised to the point that it wasn't emergency repair, we would probably be able to do that again.
It's, it's close to that now, I can see somebody not paying attention and going right off because it's, it's a significant chunk of road, it's been four or five feet missing, maybe four feet.
Do we, are there barrels or anything up?
There's a cone.
We'll put barricades up and we'll put signage up if it's reduced to one lane, so we can do that.
It's reduced to one lane?
Yeah.
I was there today, reduced to one lane.
So we'll get those up, yeah.
Hey, if you're riding that every day, just keep in touch with them.
You know, I get your stops on, I want to send a text, but leave alone, I know you're on, there's a cone there, so I know you're taking care of it.
No, we'll barricade it, that's what we did the last time and we'll, we'll put one lane ahead and those types of things, so we'll put the signage up, but we'll keep an eye on it, but if it does get to that point, we may have to do it under emergency repair. So that's out there unfortunately, again, Tower Hill is just prone to that and, and again, I think, I think we'll bring something, we asked for kind of a master plan of what's there and how long it's been there and how, and how it's performed since it's been there, so we'll share that with the Public Works Committee and then, you know, discuss that at that time.
That's a good idea, yeah.
The only other thing that I had and it wasn't in the memo, I did receive word today that the, it's kind of the grant season, if you will, and South Bank is filing again for us, the Safe Routes to School application, similar to what we filed last year for North Fort Thomas Avenue, from North Fort Thomas at Bear Drive to the corporate limit, so we are making that grant application again through South Bank.
Could you defer the original one with the deny or pass over?
Yes, that, this will be the third time.
Not deny, they just pass over it?
This will be the third time that we've made the application, yeah. We're going to try and wear them out.
Yeah, maybe persistence will pay.
So with the assistance of South Bank.
What do they, what do they, they don't acknowledge in one way or the other, but it's an annual cycle?
Well, the first time was, was years ago. Correct, yes, the first time was, was probably within the last 10 years.
Yeah, but it's a chunk of time.
The most recent one was last year, I guess I hadn't heard back, so it's an annual type of consideration and if you don't hear back, you didn't get it.
Correct, or they'll send you a denial saying.
And with the new, with the new governor in office, a lot of that stuff kind of got kicked around a little bit, so the second time around might be a better chance.
Have we asked the residents on the north end of town if they want that?
Well.
Not recently.
Not recently, but we've had a number, we actually had a number from the council a couple of years ago and they brought a petition, it didn't include all the owners, but it did include a high percentage of the owners on that.
Yeah, they wanted.
Question, a majority of, not everybody, but.
Yeah, so there was high percentages that, that responded to a resident-generated petition asking for it, so yeah, to answer your question, I think there was general support there and we, I think the commitment from council and the city at that time was we would pursue any grant opportunity, but it was not something that the city was going to underwrite for the total cost.
And I think the thought behind it this time around is that South Bank offered to write the grant for us and the idea was if we get the grant, then we get a public hearing together and get people together and say, okay, we've got money available, we'll do this and bring it back up again. It was dealt with before in the past and yes, the vast majority of the people wanted it, there, there's always a couple who say, no, we don't, we don't want this and it's going to take out my rose bush or whatever the problem's going to be, but we thought there's no point in doing that at this point until we see if the grant is bad.
Got you, thank you.
I do not have anything else unless anybody had any questions.
Any updates from Bloomfield Chown at all, any, anything new to report on the homes?
We, we met with the developer, Bloomfield Chown, they, we met with them to discuss kind of due diligence on their end, moving forward with doing a lot of the cost estimating for the development of the site, for the rehabilitation of the houses, as I've indicated previously, they are completely on board with this project, they are actually in the process of pursuing those numbers and working on that part and it really just comes down to when the VA is willing to part with the property, so that's still, that's still the issue, we don't have an issue with our developer, we have an issue with the VA getting to the point where they can transfer the property.
We did have a good meeting and went through all the things that, what can both the city and the developer continue to be doing to work towards the goal of getting this thing done, even though we don't have the final document from the VA yet, so we went through a list of things we could do and both, both entities are pursuing that, so that when we get to go ahead, hit the ground running, they were committed enough. that they were willing to do that. So, that's a good thing.
Continue to be hopeful, I guess.
Government had its best.
Yeah, and I guess I would just add, the, and the developer really doesn't have a role in trying to acquire the property.
Yeah.
So, that's not really a role that they serve. That's really between the city and the VA. So, they're kind of on the sideline waiting for that to happen. But at the same time, they're willing to enter into the process in terms of, you know, spending their resource to discover what cost and actual cost will be associated with the development itself. So, that's kind of where they are.
I would have.
It's getting close.
Yeah.
It's getting, it's getting close.
It's getting close, okay.
Yeah.
Because you would think that they should be able to come up with some numbers and see if it makes sense as a developer, you know, to them. By this time, anyway, I just, but I'm outside of the.
Well, I think they've already gotten to that point.
I think they're to that point. I think the important thing to remember is that, you know, the, without any timeframe for construction or any ability to control that process, anything they put into this project is really just resource on the hope that we actually obtain the property. So, to ask them to continue to spend money into the project is really their risk that they're willing to take, and that's kind of where they are. But as you can tell from the timeframe, from, from the point of signing the contract with them until now, that process is not quick. And I can't sit here today and tell you that it's going to happen next month or by the end of this year. So, they're kind of taking that leap of faith in order to do that. And I think they've continued to say, we're that person, we're ready to do that. And they are now taking the next steps by, by committing resource to do all those cost studies.
Okay, any other? Finance committee report on disbursements.
Record of disbursements, August 15th, 2016. General fund, $147,266.04. Tower park fund, $2,000. Public works KDOT fund, $28,072. Reoccurring debt service fund, $1,140.88. CBD revitalization, $5,086.12. Waste fee, $70,732.69. Police and fire pension fund, $1,871.23. Total, $256,168.96. We, the undersigned members of the finance committee, recommend that warrants number 302-516 through 302-634 be approved and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Muller, Chair Person, Ms. Kelly, number.
Move to the chair.
Second. Mr. Muller?
Hi.
Mr. Beadle?
Hi.
Ms. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Beadle?
Hi.
Okay, we are down to ordinance resolution orders. Text amendment to the CG zones.
This is a summary of ordinance number. Ordinance number O10, 2006. An ordinance accepting the recommendation of the Fort Thomas Planning Commission submitted and its resolution number Z01, 2016. In amending the official zoning ordinance of the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, be an ordinance number O16, 2007, to include hotel as a listed permitted use in a general commercial zone under Article 10, Zone Regulations, Section 10.12, General Commercial Zone, GC, subsection A, uses permitted. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on August 17th, 2016, to consider an amendment to the text of Section 10.12A, Zone Regulations, to allow hotel as a permitted use within the general commercial zone. The commission found that hotel fits the guidelines for permitted uses in the general commercial zone and recommends that the text of the zoning ordinance be amended. Section 10.12A of this Fort Thomas zoning ordinance be amended to include hotel as a permitted use in the general commercial zone.
That's just the first reading. All right, we move on to the tax rate ordinance.
This is a summary of ordinance number O11, 2016. An ordinance providing for the imposition, levy, collection, and apportionment for the taxes of the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, for the year 2016, and fixing the tax rate. For 2016, there is imposed as taxes of the city the sum of .402 upon each $100 valuation of real property, .402 upon each $100 valuation of personal property and mixed property, and .3971 upon each $100 valuation of motor vehicles subject to taxation within the city limits, and .402 upon each $100 valuation of all franchise valuations, to be used for deferring the current and incidental expenses for city government. The taxes shall be due and payable at the city building or P.O. Box 639115, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45263, on the date the ordinance becomes effective. All bills not paid or postmarked by October 31st, 2016, shall be delinquent and a penalty of 5% of the amount of the total bill shall be added. The city treasurer shall collect the bills with it, with said 5% penalty added and interest at a rate of 8% per annum until paid on the amount of the tax and waste fee. The city clerk shall add an additional penalty of 10% of the amount of the unpaid total bill on January 1st, 2017. The city treasurer shall then proceed to collect the bills with a total penalty of 15% and interest from November 1st, 2016. In the event that a delinquent tax bill is referred to the city attorney for collection, legal action will be initiated to collect the delinquent tax, interest, and penalty levied thereof, and the costs and fees associated. The city of Fort Thomas has a lien upon the property assessed for the tax and waste fees and all penalties, interest fees, commission charges, and other expenses, including court costs and attorney fees.
Anything else to come before council? All right, I'll hand back to Andy Dalton. Meeting adjourned.